All right, it's seven o'clock. Uh, Dave, have you started the transcript?
Let me do that. Okay.
Okay, so we'll start at seven o'clock. Welcome everyone to the town Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, February fourteenth. A reminder to everyone that's online that um the meeting is being recorded. A replay will be available within a couple of days. We'll start the meeting by taking attendance. Uh, Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feeley.
Mickey Feeley here.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Yeah.
Assumi Humphries.
Yeah.
And uh, my name's Tom Lucy and obviously I am here. With that, I'm going to ask our clerk, uh, Joe Pride to read the legal notice. Are you ready to roll, Joe?
Yeah, sure thing, Tom. Uh, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Meeting ID eight, five, zero, seven, three, zero, two, zero, seven, four, six, passcode five, zero, four, zero, four, two. Please use only dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and all language. Assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please call, contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renoff, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance on vacation. Will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove the accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-four dash thirty-two, twenty-four dash thirty-three. Samuel Madison and Sarah Madison, application for variance under Article ten. Section one ninety dash sixty-six from the requirements of Article six and Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to proposed additions onto a single-family dwelling. Application for determination and or finding with respects to continuation and extension of non-conforming use is under Article nine, uh, Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct additions onto the existing single-family dwelling. The property is shown as by map twenty-five lot parcel zero, one, A of the assessors map and is located at ninety-three Spring Street, Board of Appeal.
Thank you, Joe. Um, as we get to the agenda is our practice. We have heard from a, a couple of the cases uh, on the agenda tonight. Uh, one with the withdrawal and uh, a couple continuances. So if people are, are here for those, we're going to read those into the record first. And uh, folks don't have to hang around. First letter is from attorney Brian McGrail dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Regarding Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC, one auto on road. Case numbers twenty-three, sixty-six, twenty-three, sixty-seven, twenty-three, sixty-eight. On behalf of my clients, Mira LLC and Sky Group LLC, I respectfully across the Board of Appeals allow the above referenced applications to be withdrawn without prejudice at this time. We anticipate refiling in the future once a new concept plan and building style is developed and finalized. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. And again, without prejudice.
Right, Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we uh, that we um, accept the petitioner's request to withdraw their applications uh, without prejudice at this time.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, regular voting members and Greg, uh, Dave.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is withdrawn without prejudice. Next letter is dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four from attorney Brian McGrail. Regarding Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC, three Melvin Street, case numbers twenty-three, seventy-seven, twenty-three, seventy-eight, and twenty-three, seventy-nine. Please continue this matter until your meeting on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And that we are still in the process of working on items requested by the Department of Public Works Engineering Division. The current extension for the board to render and or file decisions is through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chair, I um, make a motion to continue this hearing to our March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting and accept the applications. Uh, applicants' request to extend the hearing, um, the public hearing for us to render a decision until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second from Joe's, I, yep. All right, same voting numbers. Uh, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matter is continued to March thirteenth and extended to April thirtieth. Next letter dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four from attorney Brian McGrail. Regarding Samuel Madison and Sarah Madison, ninety-three Spring Street. Case numbers twenty-four, thirty-two, twenty-four, thirty-three. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and that my client is in the process of making a revision to the plans. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chair, I move that we um, continue this uh, new hearing uh, at ninety-three Spring Street to our meeting on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Matter is continued. We are going to somewhat continue the matter at the um residents at Nahat, but we have a little bit of discussion with that, so I'm going to wait till that pops up on the agenda. So with that, we'll, we'll be uh, start with continued hearings. Cases twenty-three, forty-three, twenty-three, forty-four, twenty-three, forty-five, twenty-three, forty-six, twenty-three, forty-seven, twenty-three, forty-eight, twenty-three, forty-nine, twenty-three, fifty. Granted Family Trust LLC, three, fourteen, three, thirty, three, thirty-six Salem Street. Mr. McGrail, believe that's yours?
It is. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant on this matter, uh, Jim Cook and Bill Mandela here. Uh, the principals of the uh, entity uh, constituting the applicant um, on this proposal. Um, to refresh the board's memory, I think the board um, is pretty much done with this matter. Um, we continued it because we needed to make uh, one change to our site plan, which was the adjustment of the single-family dwelling on lot twelve um, in order to um, accommodate uh, access. Um, the landscape plan did not change. It didn't, it was that much of a tweak. Mr. Tarbell was designated to work with us on that, and I believe he is satisfied with what we did, but he can certainly, I'm sure, uh, speak for himself in that regard.
Yeah, I reviewed it. It's, it really is very minor and no landscaping changed at all. If you could have to do a overlay to even see how much the house moved.
It's de minimis. So um, so I, I, I can share that plan. I've submitted it. We made one tweak to it today and I'll um, I'll send that to you and Gail was uh, lot twelve, the designation lot twelve was outside of the boundaries of lot twelve. So John Ogrin from Hayes Engineering, who's here with us tonight, he just modified that and put it within the uh, box of uh, lot twelve. So that was that. Um, do you see a need to share that plan, Mr. Chair, or um?
I'll ask the board members. I don't have any questions, but I don't want to uh, prevent other board members. Right now, uh, just for the record, um, there are only four members that are available to uh, vote for this. It'll be Chip, Joe, Greg, and myself. But if others have questions too, I don't want to cut them off. I'm fine. Uh, do board members want to see that?
No, I'm fine.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm fine. And again, I'm, I'm not a voting member on this unfortunately, but um, um, the other note I had was designating two spots as visitor. I see the site plan was updated to do that, so.
Yes.
That was the only other bullet item I had from my notes. So I'm good as far as.
Same here. They, they responded to that request.
Yep. So plans look good. For what it's worth. Okay, so with um, I guess with that consensus, uh, what I did want to share uh, briefly is we, we've updated the condition slightly uh, pursuant to some comments for the board, and I just wanted to share those. I've redlined them to make it easy. So this was, this is the new condition that you put on that uh, requires a, a certification from the project uh, engineers on the um compliance with the plans that would be approved by your board. And we did that on four sixty and four seventy-two Main Street also. And the building inspector is satisfied with this language. I've gone over it with him. Uh, the next change that I made was um, we, we kind of revised this to uh, state that there won't be any parking on the neighborhood streets. So during construction, parking is not allowed in any of the surrounding neighborhood streets. And onsite parking will be restricted to specific personnel and designated areas onsite at the sole discretion in direction of the project superintendent. So we just added that not neighboring streets to, to kind of what was there before. That was requested of the board. And the only other change was um, Greg asked me to change this language to be consistent with number twenty. He has requested, so we modified that a little bit. And lastly, uh, Mr. Hatfield mentioned the parking spaces, and I just belted suspended that uh, with the condition, not to just show them on the plan that it's a condition. Two of the parking spaces shown as visitor on the final site plan shall always remain visitor parking spaces. So now they're just not labeled on the plan, but they're, they're coupled with a condition. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if you can uh, stop sharing.
Wait, one second. Can you go back to that, Brian?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Greg. Yep.
I don't, I just need to read one again. I don't know if you actually encompassed what I was trying to say on.
On eighteen, Greg?
I think so. Has requested the application provided draft language to the reasons. No, so I think what I was trying to say is twenty also says, can you go down?
Yep.
Twenty says satisfactory to town council. That's what I was, I, eighteen should have been there. There's no, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
None of the guys at the D, DPW land use lawyers, so. Yeah, they might be okay with the language as encompassing, but not the legal part of it.
Yeah, so what, yeah, I got you. So I'm going to do, I'm going to do, sorry about that, Greg. I missed.
No, no worries. It's fine.
Um, so what we'll say, um, okay. All right, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna ma, I'll match it and then you'll see it.
Yep.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna highlight.
I got a note on that, Greg. I'll make sure it's in the.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll fully make sure. I'm not going to waste everybody's time while I, while I do it. So thank you.
It is recorded, so that's fine. Makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, real quick, Brian, um, I know we're not really asking this much anymore, but construction schedule, I think it's just a curiosity factor. Um, do you know when your client would start and how long this project would be?
Um, Jim, can you answer that? Do you address that?
Hi, this is Jim Cook. Um, so we actually don't have a definitive one right now, but a project like this usually ranges from the time we're out of construction, about twelve months. Um, I'm sorry, time we're out of the ground. So that from the time the site gets cleared to the occupancy is approximately twelve months.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, since we reviewed these conditions last time, do we need to read them in again for the record? Or will it just be as confirmed?
I think it's fine. It's confirmed. If you recall, the only reason we're, we're at one more meeting is that they had to change a couple drawings.
Yeah.
Put the visitor uh, parking on there and a couple really minor things. We were really ready to roll last meeting. In my mind, but I don't want to shut anyone down if they feel differently.
Uh, we concur. I think you can, if you were to proceed to a vote, just note as amended and presented this evening, kind of reference would suffice in my mind. Cause we did take them all, read them all last time. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing seen done. Brian, a couple things, just for the record, two things I want to, well, just so I think you're aware and we talked about it, but there are only four members uh, available to vote for this. Are you comfortable with that?
We are.
Okay. The second thing is, given the number, I, in my notes, yeah, you've given us a couple of extensions. I think it's up in a week or so. There's like eight permits here. It's chair, I'm gonna need some time. I, uh, I'm gonna really ask for an extension. I'm sorry to do that to you, but.
No, that's okay. I'm gonna need time too, because I've got to write.
It's a lot of material and it's eight, eight different permits.
Yeah.
And um, so uh, you know, if we could get to towards the end of April, that would really help me.
Yeah, we'll do it before. Um, if, can we, can we say April fifteenth? Would that be okay?
Yeah, we should be able to get done by then. If we can get it done before, then that's fine too. I just want to give myself, I don't want to be running up against that uh, deadline, which I think is in about a week or so.
It i, it's the end of the month. It's coming up fast. Yeah. And it wa, it won't be done by then, or if it, if it's done, it won't be done right. It's just too much. So.
Right.
Um, so yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'm fine with April fifteenth if everyone else is.
I'll send a letter tomorrow confirming that.
Thank you. Okay, for the last time, there hasn't really been any material presented, but uh, is there any member of the public here that wishes to comment on these? So please use the raised hand. I see a hand, uh, uh, it's under the name Jane DeDario, but I'm assuming you're not Jane DeDario.
And no, um, I'm Al DeDario, Jane's um, husband, and we're excited to have this happen. And Jane and I want to thank everybody for all the work that you did. I know it took a long time, um, but um, from the way it looks, it's going to be a real nice little um, um, uh, place to live. And um, Jane and I thank you so much and thanks, thanks an awful lot.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I, I will concur with that, Mr. DeDario, that uh, the the applicant here has worked very closely with the town. And uh, even on matters that weren't of his uh, control with the uh, with the flooding in the area. So I, I know as a board, we appreciate applicants work on that. And I hope some of the other um, some of the other folks on here that have cases before us, look at that example of uh, cooperation and with the town and with the board and a, a good ending for all. So with that, um, back to the board, as I'm seeing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll be making some motions. So um, on all the motions, the final site plan by Hayes Engineering, which is dated February ninth, two thousand twenty-four is the final site plan. The final landscaping plan by James Emanuel dated February ninth, twenty twenty-four. The final architectural drawings and materials booklet by MZO Group dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That was good, wasn't it, Greg?
And then I move that we grant a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two and one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing a nineteen-unit mid-rise apartment on lot eleven of the final site plan as shown on the final site plan, final landscape plan and final architectural plan. And the findings for that are, A, the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations as requiring a special permit in the district for which the application has been made. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. There is a need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. C, the requested use will not create and or add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. D, the create, requested use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system for which in extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. E, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or journey districts, nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience or welfare. And the requested use will not by its addition to a neighborhood cause an excess of the particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhoods. This use will put lighted property to a beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. G, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and it will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not noxious to the residential use. And H, lot eleven is the business zoning district, which the board has determined is extended pursuant to section one ninety dash ninety of the bylaw. Under section one ninety forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws, the board also reviewed this section of the bylaw, which is pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority, us, the ZBA, and other applicable agencies shall consider, among other things, the following. One, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties and improvements. Two, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse and other wastes and the methods of surface and stormwater drainage. Three, provision for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related use of lots attract. The board has considered all of the above reference criteria and is satisfied. The conditions along with this special permit have already been presented and discussed as we did tonight and at the last meeting and go along with this special permit. That is my.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing seen none. Again, the four voting members are Chip, Joe, Greg and myself. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That is unanimous.
I move that we grant a special per, permit pursuant to section one ninety thirty-two dot one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing reductions and or alterations to the dimensional requirements under section one ninety dash thirty-two D and Table two of the bylaw related to a nineteen-unit mid-rise apartment on lot eleven of the final site plan as shown on the final site plan and far final architectural drawings, including the, the following. A, allowing a reduction and or alteration in the required lot frontage and lot width to be that as shown on the final site plan. B, allowing a reduction in the required front side and rear setbacks to be that as shown on the final site plan. C, allowing building or lot coverage of thirty-nine point five percent and as shown on the final site plan. D, eliminating the requirement of footnote six, which requires compliance of section one ninety dash thirty-one and footnote seven of Table two of the bylaw. And E, any other reductions or alterations from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two D and Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plan. The same findings of the last special permit, and furthermore, these reductions and or alterations will enhance the project as a whole and allow it to benefit the neighbor for which it is situated. Also, the same conditions as already presented.
Seconded.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seen none, same voting members. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
Three, I move that we grant a special permit percent pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw reducing the requirements of the standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the bylaw as follows. A, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D of the bylaw reducing the required width of aisles to allow the aisles as shown on the final site plan. B, section one ninety dash thirty-seven E of the bylaw reducing the required setback of off-street parking areas to allow them to be closer than seven and a half feet to the building as shown on the final site plan and eliminating the requirement that open parking area shall be separated from the street line by a landscape strip not less than fifteen feet in width. And C, section one ninety dash thirty-seven F of the bylaw eliminate the requirement for screening. D, section one ninety dash thirty-seven I three of the bylaw allowing the common driveway and eliminating requirements stated in the section. Section one ninety dash forty B, eliminating the requirement for screening pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-one G of the bylaw. F, any other necessary restrictions in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. The findings, same findings as the prior special permits. And furthermore, that the board finds the application of the standards for off-street parking and loading under Article seven proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to lack of suitable land, design, considerations or other similar factors. The granting of a, of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character or welfare of the neighborhood or district of the town. Furthermore, the dirt board determined that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder the safe entry or exit of vehicles from any driveway to the street or restricted visibility at a corner of two streets. The conditions are, have already been presented and are the same.
Seconded.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seen none, same voting members. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes too. That too is unanimous.
I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-one C, one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing a driveway to exceed a width of twenty feet on lots one, two and three as shown on the final as, excuse me, sir. On lots eleven, twelve and thirteen as shown on the final site plan. We have the same findings of the prior special permits and the same conditions as already presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seen none, same voting members. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-one C one and one ninety dash thirty-seven I of the Wakefield zoning bylaw by allowing a common driveway to serve lots eleven, twelve and thirteen as shown on the final site plan and eliminating the requirement of off-street parking spaces on lots twelve and thirteen so that they have no required off-street parking spaces. Also eliminating the requirement of section one ninety dash thirty-one C one that sixty percent of the front yard shall be maintained as open space on lots twelve and thirteen. This is because of unique circumstances that the board found that the property has a unique topography and shape. We also found that there's a hardship uh, that the board found the variance allowing a common driveway diminishes the risk of an accident caused by how the property currently accesses Salem Street and the harm that could be caused by multiple driveways serving the property. There's a degree of danger that could result from compliance with this ordinance. D, substantial detriment or derogation, the board found that the requested relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying a substantial degradating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The conditions would all have already been presented.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seen none, same voting members. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
I move that we could grant the variance from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing the property to be divided or subdivided into lots eleven, twelve and thirteen as shown on the final site plan. Under unique circumstances, the board found that the property has a unique topography and shape. Under hardship, the board found that the variance allowing the property but, but divided or subdivided as shown on the final stamp, site plan eliminates a requirement that a nice, single-family dwelling be raised. nice single-family dwelling be raised, which would be a financial hard hardship. And C, the substantial detriment or derogation, the board found that the requested relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, or without nullifying of substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, the conditions have already been presented. That's my motion.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that too is unanimous.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant a variance from the requirements of articles six and table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, including but not limited to lot width, all yard setbacks and lot shape coefficient of regularity. Requirements under one ninety dash thirty-one K relating to lot twelve to allow it to be a buildable lot as shown on the final site plan. The board found that the property has a unique shape and topography. The board found that the shape and topography of the property prohibits development consistent with the zoning bylaw warranting the variance. And that the board, and we also found that the the requested relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and or without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of these bylaws. Um and Mister Chairman, there are no conditions that go along with these variances, because these are for the um single-family homes.
I'll second that one.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, that is unanimous.
And then Mister Chairman, I move that we grant a variance from the requirements of article six and table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, including but not limited to the lot width, all yard setbacks and lot shape coefficient of regularity requirements under section one ninety dash thirty-one K relating to lot thirteen, to allow it to be a buildable lot as shown on the final set plan. The board found that the property has a unique shape and topography. The board found that the shape and topography of the property prohibits development consistent with the zoning bylaw warranting the variance. The board found that the requested relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, or without nullifying or substantially degger degradating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And again, there are no conditions because this is for the single-family lot.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes, that is is unanimous as well.
And with no disappointment, Mister Chairman, that's it.
That's why I asked for the extension, Chip. Okay, thank you.
But I would like to echo everybody's statement that the petitioners have been really good, that yes, this has taken a long time, but I think we have a really good project for this corner, and this corner deserves a good project.
Thank you, Mister Chair, behalf of my clients, I want to thank the board, I want to thank the neighborhood uh that have have come along and and I think uh it's been a good working collaborative, that there's gonna be a lot of drainage work that's gonna be done done out here, that's gonna improve the neighbors uh quality of life, um and the aesthetics are gonna be good, and there's gonna be a lot of infrastructure improvements in that area because of this project that are gonna benefit a lot of people, so thank you, it was worth, it was worth the time to get it right, appreciate it. Yep, agreed, thank you and thank you to your clients.
Good luck.
All right, good luck, gentlemen. Next up, moving right along. And again, this will just be a short discussion, um but we're gonna uh case twenty-four ten, the residents at Nahat LLC, one nineteen Nahant Street, zero Nahant Street. Um, one uh that we have a uh letter from their attorney requesting a continuance, and then uh Chip and I will uh hopefully give you just a really quick update, we had a subcommittee hearing last Thursday evening, I'll start with the letter from Attorney Panos dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four to the Wakefield Board of Appeals. It reads, it follows, the Wakefield zoning Board of Appeals is scheduled to hear the above referenced matter on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, which follows our meeting of the board's design subcommittee, which occurred on February eighth, twenty twenty-four. At that meeting, we discussed potential redesign of the project related to mitigating massing and height impacts on adjacent properties. We also discussed the need to review project traffic impacts. I am pleased to report that the first draft of the traffic impact analysis prepared by Vanessan Associates Inc. is under internal review, and we will submit the final form to the Z B A and the town's traffic advisory committee shortly. We have also been in contact with the T A C to get on their next agenda, and we're waiting to hear back from Lieutenant Anderson. Accordingly, request was made at the dis- board's design subcommittee, we agreed to continue the hearing on this matter to the board's next scheduled hearing when we will have more to report. Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions, thank you for your courtesies and files can continuance request with the board. Um, I'll add that we at that meeting, uh and Chip, I'll ask you to chip in here, one of the interesting things, uh there was a subcommittee meeting, but forty people showed up, um so there were a lot of neighbors there, uh we took a lot of public comment. Um in chatting with some of the neighbors, they're not um for different reasons, they're not Zoom people, so which is why they took the opportunity, the first in me person in meeting to show up and and to and to be heard on this, where we received a lot of letters, and as the board will recall, we didn't have so many folks on Zoom testifying, but they turned out in force at that meeting. Uh, we made a little bit of progress in terms of uh making some suggestions and trying to really work on the the scale of the project, the massing, the heights, and um and trying to get them to move forward with this traffic uh study, cuz it's a, that's gonna be key, as as everyone has stated, there's some serious public safety concerns by the members of the board, many members of the public as well, so that uh they seem to hear that, they seem to be according to uh Mister Panos's letter, they it it appears that they at least have their initial assessment prepared, so Chip, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
No, I I think that's pretty much where we stood, um. You know, I think we were at a bit of an impasse because I would say that they didn't wanna talk about size of the project or anything else until they had the traffic study to go, so um what I would be curious about, um Mister Chairman, is is along with this continuous continuation, did they give us any more days on the hundred and eighty?
No, they did not, uh the board should know that Chip and I expressed our 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 deep concern that the hundred and eighty days was ticking, and that this traffic report was late, and it's a key element in our review of the project. Um, and we asked Mister Panos to his uh, his client was not there. He said he couldn't make the commitment on an extension without his client, and he was gonna check into that. This letter doesn't reflect that, though. So uh when the next time we see Mister Panos, that will certainly be uh on the top of our list because uh we feel we're gonna need more time, I think we need a hundred and eighty days from the time we we start to look at the traffic, but um, we'll see how that goes.
So, the only other thing is I look forward to seeing the first round of their traffic. And then I would hope that Lieutenant Anderson can get it on the docket and get looking at it as well.
And as we've said in the past, it's our intention to it'll go before the T A C, and then we're gonna want both uh the representative from the police and fire to appear at this board, so we can have a full discussion, maybe it might be two meetings, maybe it might be, you know, folks should maybe be prepared for a special meeting if we're not getting these extensions um to discuss the traffic report. Any questions or comments?
I just have two real quick, cuz they're more just comments, and one of them being a sort of surprise that maybe somehow we can note to the traffic committee, I think, or to T A C, I think last time we were told, last meeting, so two weeks ago, we were told, or I guess three weeks ago, uh we were told, hey, we haven't really even thought about, you know, we're waiting to hear from T A C and where we should even measure, and now we're being told that, oh, we already have our first draft of a report, that seems awfully quick to me, so um my initial thought is wondering how in-depth those measurements study can really be. Um, and then also, as we'll see later, I'm not gonna talk about another project, but we'll see later, one of the projects is taking uh larger measures that we were told by this applicant aren't even on the table until we talk about it, I think, so uh just for the people in the subcommittee, you know, as we're being told what forty B is, you know, he's got his arguments are already being knocked down from one or other already completed forty Bs, and the one across the street that already is making concessions that we're being told just don't happen with forty Bs. Uh, as we'll see coming up, that's completely incorrect. So, a- as we've been told, you know, projects, forty B projects are supposed to be uh given the deference that others are, and in this case, that's not happening here.
Yeah, the one thing I would comment, Greg, on your comments is that they have gone to T A C and gotten what they want, what T A C wanted them to look at.
Okay, cuz I don't think he conveyed that last time, I thought the way he was so taken aback and was sort of conveyed that, we're waiting on T A C to
No, so they, what they didn't wanna do is do their report before T A C told them what to look at. So now T A C's told them what to look at, now they've done their report.
And take it, yeah, that just seems quick to take measurements, they said they haven't even, they haven't even known when to take measurements yet, but that's fine.
Yeah. No, it uh Greg, it was a spirited back and forth, I'll just leave it at that at the subcommittee.
Yep.
Mister Chairman, do you plan on meeting them with them again and before the next meeting, or has it just been postponed until? After.
Well, we're 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 in that um chicken and egg loop where they're not gonna discuss density reductions until they see that we discuss traffic, so um they at least took some some direction on if there was gonna be density reductions, some potential strategies to look at.
So I guess there's other concerns with, it's not just traffic, if they, if we wanna have maybe uh you know, fire come and talk about that, they had concerns too that are already on the table that we we could bring out in the meantime, if they're gonna drag out, you know, if they're not gonna give us the hundred and eighty days to begin with, we wanna keep showing that we're trying to move forward, and it's not just traffic, you know, we could, we could talk about fire in the meantime, and and have them back before you guys or us, I don't, I don't know, whatever.
They 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 did present a potential um massing change that would allow fire trucks better access around the whole building and through the parking lots. But I I have to say that
In access by the ladder and all that, I think it was his ladder too.
Yeah, consistent with their previous materials, um uh incredibly underwhelmed with the materials they show up.
Was that in your email that you sent last week, that that um plot plan with the um access? Is that what I saw?
It may have been.
Yeah, they they circulated, we we circulated that before our meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, cuz it did look different than their original plan, they looked like there was some room on the right-hand side now or something, I saw.
Yep.
A truck can get around the whole thing now.
Yep.
I do know that by departments, the more, they're more worried about getting in, getting out isn't a problem, they they figure as long as they can get in, they've made that argument in the past, they don't really care about getting out as much, I mean, I I'm I'm not gonna speak for them, but I've heard that in the past.
Let them make that argument.
Yeah, they they just worry about getting in and then getting set up, but that's, you know.
Okay, so with that, um we're gonna ask to continue this to our next meeting. We didn't really present any new information tonight, so I don't think I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I'll just look for a motion to continue the matter to our next meeting, which is um, I believe on the twenty eighth.
I move that we continue this to the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
Oh, okay.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded, uh regular voting members and Greg, uh Chip.
Yes.
Uh, Joe.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, mass continued to February twenty eighth. Moving on, next up is case twenty-four twenty thirty-two Nahant Street LLC. I believe I saw Mister Haverty's name up on the screen.
Good evening, Mister Chairman.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Um, with me tonight is uh project engineer Chris Barajas and project architect Andrew Jones. Um, we have made a number of changes, I think that there was, they were already alluded to during your last hearing. Um, these are responsive to comments that were received at the initial public hearing for this matter. Um, so why don't I just uh introduce, um I think we'll start with our engineer Chris Barajas, and he can sort of go over what changes have been made to the site plan.
Yep, please proceed.
You there, Chris?
Yes, I am, uh thank you uh for the record, uh Mister Chairman, Chris Baraja, civil engineer for thirty-two Nahant Street, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, is it okay to share my screen?
Please do.
Okay. I'm gonna go right uh to our revised landscape plan, I'll be speaking from that plan. Uh, but I do have the entire plan set handy, if you wanna uh review anything in particular, and what I'll do is I'll zoom right in here, so that we can get a good look at um, good look at the building. And so our team will try not to be repetitive tonight, but I'll cover uh quickly the changes, uh the major changes. Um, and uh first and foremost, our our building, which is located in the front of the property here, has been reduced in the number of units from thirty-two units to twenty-six units. And that was accomplished by removing one of the floors of the building, and uh architect Andrew Jones will uh will present some plans that show uh the effects of that change um to the neighborhood and uh and to the site. Uh, but in reducing the number of units, what that allowed us to do inside the site um is increase uh the amount of landscape area, it also allowed us to significantly reduce the number of compact parking spaces. It allowed us to create some visitor parking. Uh, it allowed us to create a live parking space uh for uh vehicles that come and do deliveries. Uh, and and then we went through the uh the specific comments that each of the members made to see what we could do to address uh the comments specifically, so I'll just go through very quickly um and explain to you that for a twenty-six unit project at one and a half parking spaces per unit, uh the minimum number of parking spaces would be thirty-nine. So what we did um is that we took the extra spaces that we created, we are at, now we have forty-two parking spaces, so we have three extra parking spaces, and we designated a couple of the parking spaces in the back of the property as visitor parking. Uh, and then we created a live parking space in the back corner of the parking lot here. And we chose this location, um you may have uh seen other projects of similar nature, a parking space for live delivery here allows the delivery of vehicle to come into the site. And again, just to a refresher, these are twenty-four foot wide aisles um on the left or the west and the north side of the of the building. So delivery vehicle will be able to come in here and park, and then easily back out and turn and go. Um, again, visitor parking here. Uh, because we didn't need forty-eight parking spaces for the thirty-two units, it allowed us to create a couple of interior uh landscape islands uh here, we actually moved, if you recall, this location here, we had proposed our uh dumpster recycling area, and we did move move those items from here, a little bit further away from the building to the back of the parking lot here. And again, uh this allows for easy access for um uh the trash and recycling pickup that would happen, that the trucks would come in, um load, uh do a simple three-point turn and go. We have another um landscape, um intermediate landscape island in the middle of the parking lot at this location. And we also increased the sizes of the landscape island uh landscape areas in the front of the project along this parking aisle here, so this got deeper. And in the rear of the property, we're also able to make um this a little bit uh larger back here. So a little bit more about landscaping, um so we were able to add um to the plan, uh three additional trees. Uh, and the trees that we picked um are either red maple or uh black uh tupula. And uh the black tupulas would uh be uh in the front of the site here, in the two front corners, and in this little island here. And we've made a spot for two um red maple trees in the back of the property here, next to the uh dumpster area, and then out front at this location here. We've also added uh fifty-five additional woody shrubs, and they are primarily inkberry bushes, which Inkberry bushes, which is like a holly, uh so uh it'll be a shrub that would keep its uh leaves during the wintertime. Um and uh and then it. It's either inkberry, which are these uh darker ones that I've highlighted in a few areas here, or winter berry. And winter berry is a nice uh woody shrub. That's green, that has green leaves most of the year, and then as you head towards the wintertime, um. Uh there are berries that form and they turn a very bright red. You probably are familiar with it, and when they lose their leaves, the red berries. Um stay on the bushes for most of the winter and it provides um some food for uh for, for birds, if you will, in the, in the area during the wintertime. In addition to the plantings that we've added. We also, um we also added some uh additional amenities. We increased the width of our entrance staircase. Case slash sidewalk access area here. Uh what we would consider our main, the main entry to the building. So this got wider, uh we've added a couple of benches in the front of the building. And a few more planting beds for ornamental grasses and, and perennials. So from a site plan standpoint, uh those are the, those are the major changes to the plans. And um and at this point, Mr. Chairman, uh I'll let you decide if you'd like to ask me questions about the site plan, or we should, or if we should move on to Andrew's presentation for architecture.
No, let's take questions on the site plan. I, I have one to stop. What's your, what, remind me what your setback is from the sidewalk? To the building?
Uh is are you referring to the front setback or the side?
Front.
Okay, so the front setback, if we zoom in here uh to our layout plan. We are sixteen feet uh from the back edge of sidewalk, which is our street line. To the building.
Okay, uh board members, any questions?
Yeah, what's the total height of the building now, Chris?
It's uh, I'll, I'll let Andrew uh go into it in detail, uh uh but uh Mr. Chabel, but it's just under thirty five feet now.
It's exactly thirty five feet.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Anybody else? If you're, yeah, if you're done, I have a few, uh really, I guess, one question, um. We're talking about this in a neighborhood context, and I, I, I guess that's probably what we're going to get into with architecture, is fitting into the neighborhood. Um and Chris, you worked with us on the project on North Ave. And one of the things we got into a lot in the site planning outside is amenities, you know, you said you. Increase some of the men- amenities by widening the entrance area. That's not an amenity to me. This, this doesn't look neighborhood-y at all. There's no amenities whatsoever here when we were able to fit them in. Um in a non-neighborhood con- uh construction project, whereas here, no, it's directly in a neighborhood. I don't see. Any outdoor gathering space. I don't see any grills. I don't see anything of that nature here, um. Now, I think we'll talk about that more in the architecture context, but if we're going to, you know. Do it in architecture, we might as well make the whole thing become a neighborhood a- and enter the neighborhood. You know, there's, there's no backyard here. It's just going to completely stand out. It's just a building where people come and go uh and, and don't add anything to their surrounding neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this um just want to. Clarify or correct something that Chris mentioned and appreciate the uh the updates again. It, I think it's. It's headed in the right direction. I wouldn't say we're quite there yet um in my mind, but. Uh I like the fact that they're, they're um already taking some steps to reduce the massing and. And add some green space, but I would concur with Greg's comment. But uh with regard to parking, again, the bylaw, just to clarify, um. A multifamily housing. Um for two bedrooms or fewer is one and a half per dwelling unit, but for three bedrooms. There's two, two required parking spaces per dwelling unit, so. By my calculations, we require forty two spaces, given the twenty six breakdown of one, two and three bedrooms. Um so I think Chris had mentioned something like thirty nine, and with the three quote unquote extra, they did a. A live park and some two visitor parks, but um which is fine, those are, those are good to have, and I think we did request that be considered. But I just want to clarify, I think. Where they are today, given the current count and unit breakdown. They require, they're required to have forty two and they have forty two. Per the calculations of the bylaw, table three on multifamily dwellings. So. I don't think we have any quote unquote extra. Um but they have just enough what's required, couple designated visitor, which they would need. Uh given the limited off-street, uh on-street parking opportunities here.
So maybe um uh Mr. Chairman, through you uh for Mr. Headfield. Um I should have clarified. My explanation, uh but typically for forty B, for forty B projects, it, it's commonly accepted. Practice to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. I probably should have said that and, and uh instead of maybe thinking, making it sound like I was talking about the bylaw, but, but you are, you are correct, Mr. Headfield.
Yep. Okay, again, it's just. Forty B or not forty B, I think we just try to, you know, try to ensure that there's adequate parking, and so we, we use the bylaws as our guideline. Um and when there are three bedrooms involved, we just want to make sure. That we're accounting for that, and again, the visitor part, so I, I just based on where we are today, I think you got what you need at a, at a minimum. Um so I think we're good there, but um just we'll see how things proceed as we move forward. If there are any further changes to them, you know, or overall massing or unit count. But I do appreciate also that a lot of the spaces have a more regulation size or not, because that was, I think, before it was thirty one out of forty. Something forty eight were um narrow, compact spaces. Um which is, I, I think, pretty aggressive, so happy to see them come down and be more reg- regular size. Um again, so appreciate the changes so far.
Yeah, that's one thing I didn't sp- I didn't talk about specifically, but um the prior plan had thirty one compact spaces, which was a. A pretty big percentage. It was almost sixty five percent. And we heard that one loud and clear, so I've got it down to thirteen. Um so that's, that's about thirty one percent.
Yep. So appreciate the, the progress in that regard, yeah.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have a few comments, but I'm going to wait till architecture.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm going to just do a follow-up to my question though. How much space in the back there? I know there's some wetlands, uh that are probably limiting you. In the back, but that sixteen foot setback is, is not common for this street. Uh most of the houses are set back much deeper than sixteen feet. Um what do you have for room back there? Is there any room to push this back?
Right, um let me go back to the. Let's take a look here.
Because if you look at the rhythm on that street, there's two good examples. You had the two. Residents next to you, the, the, the front setbacks are far more generous.
Yep, you can see the um, this is from the, from the G I S, if you will. That's a pretty good indication of where those buildings are. And in the back here, we have setbacks from the building, um if you don't mind looking at the um. Our CAD screen here, I can tell you. I can quickly measure what we have. From the back edge of curb. To the property line, uh we're providing about five and a half feet. In the back. So along this strip right now, it's a five and a half foot strip behind this uh parking aisle.
With a twenty four foot drive aisle, right, so.
Yeah.
Pushing the building.
That's twenty four feet, right, twenty, twenty four feet, twenty four feet. And like I, like we talked about earlier, most of the spaces are eight, uh are eighteen feet deep. Uh these are eighteen feet, all eighteen feet deep. These are all eighteen foot deep as well.
Okay, because a- again, this is as proposed now, and again. Um. To Dave's point, I think it's heading in the right direction, but this will be one of the bigger buildings on the, on the street. And to have such little setback up front, it's kind of looming on the street, uh. I'm not as comfortable with that, but. All right, if there's no other.
Including the old school, including the old school building, which is.
Correct.
A lot further back.
Yep. Unfortunately, I've been spending a lot of time on the street looking around, so. A little more than I'd like, um. If no one else has any questions or comments for Mr. Sparages, I'm going to move to the architecture. I don't want to cut anyone off, though. Okay, let's uh. Let's ask Andrew to make his presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Lucy and board members for having me. My name's Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects. Also client Scott Green for thirty two Nahon Street. Uh can you see my board?
We can.
Yeah, perfect. Just give me one second, I'll go to full screen here. Okay. As Paul Haverty was mentioning, uh we made it quite the reduction in uh unit count and also massing of the building. So we went from thirty two units that were twenty six one bedroom to two bedroom and four three bedroom. Down to twenty six unit building, which is now a twenty two one bedroom units. Uh one, two bedroom units and three, three bedroom units. And also a reduction in height from, I believe it was forty five feet, three inches down to exactly thirty five feet. Um so here's a new just street graphic, what it looks like. As you can see, we lost one story. And then I'm going to jump over to a graphic that I know the board members were asking for. Which is a street graphic showing context around it, so. In this case, what we decided to do was draw the house to the left and also the house to the right. Um and contacts to the building. As you can see, we're showing two graphics, the one on the top being our new proposed three-story building at thirty five feet tall. And below, you can see the four-story previous building we presented, which was forty five feet, three inches. Um as you can see. We are just, you know, right above this house to the right, which is a two and a half story house. Um I almost think that the chimney brings it over thirty five feet. Uh and then the house to the left is just a one and a half story house, so. It's a little bit smaller uh than the one on the right. Far as that goes, I'm not going to bore you too much with the interior, as not much has changed since last presentation, besides a whole unit lost. So the first floor, second floor, third floor. Units are all the same, um. As you can see on the first floor plan, we're showing the covered parking to the left of the building, the right. Everything else stays the same on the first floor. Um same thing on the second. And the third floor, the only real difference is. Now that we are doing the manzard roof on the third floor, you start to see. These uh dormers come out and protrude into the manzard roof line. So besides that, though, nothing really has changed as far as unit layout. Um between the three stories, it was really just the reduction of the six units up above. And then once again, here are some elevations. Sorry for jumping in and out. It's the front elevation, left showing the parking underneath. And then the right side. And the rear of the building, so. Um that is all I have to present today. Also, materials, I went through this last time. None of the materials have changed since the last presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, board members?
Yeah, um I have a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
No, go right ahead.
So. So can you bring the um front elevation up, please, Andrew?
Yep, the one, the one showing the other buildings, or just?
Uh eat, that one's fine.
Okay.
So my, I appreciate you guys losing a floor, that's great, um. My thought is, the building looks off balance. I would like to see that whole left side gone. Which I know you're going to lose four units, which would actually help you with parking, um you could shift that building over to the left. Get more green space on the right, maybe green space on the left, um. It would balance the building off a little bit better. Um in my calculations also, it's about a twenty six and a half, twenty six thousand square feet lot. Um with the laws in Wakefield that, you know, one unit per twelve hundred square feet. You would get down to your twenty two units, which from twenty six to minus the four units. You would be at your twenty two. Um I don't know, I know it's a big loss, but I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, but. To me, like I said earlier, it's, it's, it looks lopsided. I think if you got rid of that left side. It would fit in a lot better. That's it.
Thanks for your feedback.
Yep, thank you. Uh Kasumi?
I have um, I have a couple of comments too, um. So the delivery parking, the live parking spot in the back corner. Would that make more sense to you have a mail area and I don't see any package room inside, like should be on the backside of the building? Instead of the, the front. Of the building.
Kasumi, you make a good point with. The uh delivery being in the back, this is a pretty long walkthrough. We are showing the mail uh boxes along the front entry of the lobby, but. It may make sense, maybe even in one of these nooks or something. Get a mailroom or the mailboxes, just so. It's a little less of a hike back and forth for the delivery people. You make a good point.
Okay, and then the end, uh the back door to the um handicap parking lot. Uh you need to shift that door, that door doesn't have the clearance, the push and pull. Clearance, I don't think. You might want to reposition that. Um and then also, um. That corridor to the back, and then also the second inside photo corridor, that looks really narrow to me. With people moving in and out of the furniture.
It's actually five feet, surprisingly, so.
Okay.
It's a foot more than, but.
Okay, and then on um. The mix of the resident, like you have only one two bedroom and then three, three bedroom unit, shouldn't. You be mixing a little bit more like. Maybe less one bedroom and a little bit more of two bedroom, because there are a lot of families. I, I expect there'll be like families with childrens, like living in this area. And one bedroom doesn't really. I, I don't think there'll be a lot of like a single or like. Um just a two-person families on this area.
That's up for debate, um we, we meet the forty B criteria and actually have an extra two bedroom and three bedroom. Um but it's a good point and we can definitely, now that we lost that story, I think we can really start to fine tune these. Three floors and see if maybe we can open up a little bit more um two bedrooms for families and stuff like that. But yeah, it is a lot of one bedrooms as it is now.
Okay, and then um on the exterior side, um I, I'd like to see the main entry door a little bit wider. Cause you have. Like, the windows are so much wider than the door itself. If you go to, like, it's very skinny, like if you. If you can have like a side light or something like that, to have a more like a presence on the, the front door itself.
Yep. Yeah, no, I agree, um I'll just interrupt you, but actually, the reason why there was only one door to begin with was. Because we were fighting mail and packages and stuff in the front, but. If we relocate that, which I think makes a total sense, then I think we can either go to double three-foot doors of six feet total. Or maybe a three-foot with two twelve-inch trans uh satellites on it, so. Uh I agree, I agree, to make it feel.
More like in front entrance, and then on the, the last thing is the, the side of the building with the cupboard porch. Is there where you can shift the support of the cupboard porch, because on your rendering. Elevations like the, the support is actually. Overwrapping with the windows and the doors on like stereo wall. It looks a little funny to me looking at that. Like if you can, if you can shift or like a space a little bit. Different way.
So I don't think we can ship the columns, but because they fall in between the parking, which is pretty precisely laid out at this point, but I think the windows can. Potentially shift. I think looking at in three D, it, it, it feels odd, but. Realistically, in real life, I, I, I don't think it's that big of a deal, but. Um we can definitely look at shifting and maybe centering the first floor windows within the parking bays itself. So start to look at some window shipment and some alignment for sure down there.
Okay, um. Okay, uh that's all my questions. I just want you to make sure you have a package room, because a lot of. Nowadays, a lot of people have online shopping and a lot of deliveries.
Absolutely, we will look into that and update accordingly.
Okay, that's all my comments.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a. Clarification question. Andrew, can you go back to the view that shows? Um. Sort of the houses on either side?
Yeah.
I may have been thinking about this wrong, so I guess either in both views, next to. The, so on the right. But next to that beige house, there was like a blue. but next to that beige house, there was like a blue house. So I knew one house was coming down for this. Are there two houses on your lot right now that are coming down?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I think Chris, am I correct? I, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure there's two houses, right?
Yes, yeah.
That small blue house is still on your lot? Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, I thought that was on the corner.
Yeah, it's a thirty-two, thirty-two A and then thirty-six A.
Okay, so I sort of misunderstood that I was going by. So thanks for answering. Yeah, I, I, I just gotta I'm with Joe, just for some reason, and I'm not a design eye type person either, but that left-hand side of the building, it looks like, you know, the building is gonna capsize or something here. It just looks completely off, shifted on the lot. Everything in the building has shifted. It shifted to the right on the lot. The entrance is shifted to the right of the building. It clearly just seems slammed into this, this place. It just doesn't work.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else?
No, Mr. Jared, this Dave, I would just add again, in concert with those Greg and Joe's comments, maybe looking at that balancing the building a bit or moving it off the right lot gives you an opportunity for some that, those amenities space, side yard, chairs, walking, dogs, whatever. It moves it off that lot line a little bit and gives you some opportunities for more green space and amenities for the residents. I wouldn't want to squeeze the drive aisle. You know, I, I think we've done it on a project, but I, I just don't think we, I don't know. Rather see the building get smaller and maybe balanced and make room for more residential amenities than than, you know, squeezing the parking lot anymore. Or trying to push it. I'd even be okay with it being where it is on the lot line, you know, distance from the street if it was again, if those other things were, were, were done. You know, but again, we gotta see where they're, I think they can go with it.
Yep.
I, Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity to go to look at some of these condos for another reason this weekend. Not these particular condos, but some of the ones that are being newly developed or have been newly developed in the last couple of years. And this, this, what Kasumi was saying is that once you tighten down from a six-foot hallway to a four-foot hallway, you feel it. You feel it when you walk through them. You feel that there's, they are trying to get as many things as they can on a stamp. And if that's where you're trying to build, fine. But but you can feel it inside them. And if there's no amenities, there's no open mailroom, there's no outdoor space. It shows and I, I would, I would hope they would spend a little more time looking at that, cuz that's more important than having it sixteen feet away from the, the road. Anyway, I'm venting a little bit, but it's something that we need to look at because this is how they are when you go into them.
It's always actually a lot better than a lot that get proposed. The shortest length's five feet, and as you can see here, some of them open up close to eight to ten feet. So and then low areas avoid, so it's not just one, you know, three-quarters meeting at the same point. We tried to do, give some relief and some width within the hallways. Maybe it's not shown the best on here, but next time we can give some dimensions and show that these hallways actually really are breathable and
That would be great, thank you.
Long corridors.
Thank you.
Yep. Is that it, Mick?
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep.
No problem. Well, happy to have some comments. Chip, anything?
Yeah, I, where do we stand on traffic on all of this as a general comment?
Paul, would you like to speak on behalf of that?
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're in the process of getting the traffic study. We've contacted the traffic engineer, which will be VAI, the same engineering firm that's doing the traffic on the residences. So a lot of the information is going to be the same as they are in very close proximity to this project. So we anticipate having that in, in the near future.
That, 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 that's a key element, Mr. Haverdy. Perhaps your, your colleague who put the last hearing conveyed to you that in many ways, we feel like the, the application's not complete until we have that traffic study and have that traffic analysis. I'm gonna put it out there to you too, if you can't answer tonight with your client, I'm gonna, because we don't have the traffic. I think we should be adding to the one hundred and eighty days.
So, so Mr. Chairman, we, you know, we have extended the hundred and eighty day period already. We've agreed to the hundred and eighty day period, starting, you know, from the initial hearing in which we were allowed to present evidence. There's still an ample amount of time left in this process. The EOHLC regulations do not require the submittal of a traffic study as part of a chapter forty B comprehensive permit application. So at this point in time, you know, we're not willing to grant any additional extensions of the hundred and eighty period. There's still so much time left that it's, it's not really a pressing matter. And again, if we get to the point where we're close to the end of the process and it's determined that additional time is necessary, of course, we'll work with the board. We want to have a fully reviewed project. And, you know, have the board have all of the information it needs to make an informed decision. But it's just too premature to be talking about extensions at this point in time.
I'll talk to Tom Council, but where do you have on his interpretation of what he views as the end of the hundred days? What's your interpretation of the end of the hundred and eighty days?
I'll have to go back and look at it. I think we've actually specified it in one of the pleadings that we submitted to the Housing Appeals Committee, but essentially my position would be that the hundred and eighty day period, just for ease of determination, was that it commenced at the initial hearing after the appeal period with EOHLC had concluded. So it was a hundred and eighty days from that hearing. And we've also already granted a thirty-day extension of that, so it's really two hundred and ten days from that time period.
Yeah. Well, it's disappointing then to hear you say that, but cuz we don't have the traffic study. So, you know, I, I feel like we don't have a full picture to look at here. So that's unfortunate. I'm gonna hold you to your word that you'll, you'll try to cooperate with us. But I, I'd, I'd like you to rethink that when we get the traffic study. Have you even have you had the scope of the traffic study identified by TAC? Have you had that conversation with them?
We have not. But again, I presume that the scope is going to be essentially the same as the other project on the Han Street. There's, there's really not a lot to differentiate between the two in terms of location. I would think that the critical areas to be reviewed are going to be very similar.
Okay, and so you haven't even talked about the TAC hearing date?
Have not, no.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments, folks?
Not at this time.
So board members, it's my thought and I'm willing to take input on this, but to finish up on the traffic, I would expect that as part of that, we would in addition to the TAC hearing, we would have a full public hearing here at this board with representatives from both police and fire here to talk about the traffic study and the impact from this. I know, while I appreciate some of the reductions that were done now, public safety is still a major concern for everyone here. So it's our plan to do that, but again, willing to take some advice from board members as well. I think it's important that we have that full discussion here. Anything else, board members, before I turn it open to the public?
So Tom, I don't think it's a question that could be answered here, but I think it's important to bring it up so the applicant and even the prior applicant can somehow discuss it at TAC or in there. I know that in prior traffic reports, we've been told, well, we can't and we're not going to sort of include or discuss any other projects that haven't been permitted. I think even the applicant here would agree and has sort of said that you know, the other, the, the impacts of this are in the same area. So I think if at all possible, and I, I understand if maybe it cannot be in the report, but somehow we can understand everything going on in the street or, or not even everything, these two projects together in these reports, rather than getting one report that says, yep, this one project has no impact, but doesn't take into account or even talk about the, the impact in addition to the other one. I don't think it's anything to be solved tonight, but that needs to be taken into account at some point with the proper expertise and not just us asking questions. So with the engineers, that's what I'm saying, or the TAC.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I, I will say in my experience, traffic studies that I have been involved in over more than twenty years working in the permitting of these projects, almost always include known future projects, even if they have not yet been permitted. I, I would be very surprised if our traffic engineer wouldn't take into account both of these developments in the future build analysis. It's just a very typical thing to do.
That would be great news cuz I think in other instances, and actually more friendly instances, we've been told the opposite.
I, I will certainly convey to our traffic engineer that they should be taking into account both projects in the future build.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Greg, we made the same point at our subcommittee meeting here and to Mr. Panos on traffic study, so. It's a good point and I'm glad that it's out. Anything else? Okay, at this point, I will open it up to members of the public. If there's anyone here that wishes to comment on this application, I'd ask you to use the raise hand function or zoom in Zoom. I am not seeing any. Okay, here comes one, Brandon Napstad. You should be able to unmute yourself. Can you give your name and address, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
So I just wanted to call in and voice my appreciation to the board for, you know, going through these things with a fine-tooth comb and, and and caring about these developments and what's going into our neighborhoods. Going off of what was presented today in terms of the architectural plan and the landscape plan, I think if you consider that this is going in the middle of a neighborhood, there's kind of a laughable amount of green space for a project like this. You can go to Google Maps, do an aerial view and you can see all the green space in this area. The site plans for this really have none of that. It has a handful of trees and some shrubs. There's no consideration for drainage. There's no consideration for the fact that there's gonna be snow removal. You have parking spaces completely surrounding all of this. So it's just when you're going basically up to the lot lines and the street, what, like, what do you do with this stuff? It's just, doesn't seem very considerate to the neighborhood. In addition, you know, the proximity to the traffic light at Main Street and North Ave, it's just, you're so close that I, I'm curious to see how this traffic report comes out because this is, you know, this is a neighborhood that is consistently plagued with congestion, particularly around the school hours. And this only kind of adds fuel to that fire, particularly during those times. Lastly, I'd like to say that in taking into account these traffic reports and surrounding projects, I live on Stark Avenue. I didn't say that earlier, but there's another proposed development for the end of Stark Avenue. It's the longest one-way street in Wakefield. This site has been continually a site prone, so development proposals. And the biggest one, yeah, is coming with, I think it's over thirty units that are proposed. So, you know, this, I, I'm calling in cuz I care about this just because we're being so closely surrounded by these projects. And Nahann Street between the high school and the middle school is gonna be a major issue. So those are my thoughts and concerns, and I look forward to seeing how the board handles things as things progress.
Greg, thank you. Can I get Brandon, you were on Stark Ave, can I get the number, please?
Sure, forty-two.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Haverdy, you heard that, are you considering the proposal at the end of Stark Ave too? As part of the traffic study? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
No, we can't. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. So that is a project that is well-known, identified. It's already the recipient of a project eligibility letter, so that should be included in the traffic study as well.
Great, thank you. Please make sure it is.
Absolutely.
Okay, I see another hand up. Ellen?
Hi, I live at Ten Raven Road, which is at two thirty-nine Nahann Street in the back. And I'm very concerned about the traffic also. This project is really close to an intersection. Every morning when I go to work, there's a school bus picking up children at that intersection between Nahann Street and Oak Street. They're both narrow, curvy roads heading towards the high school, which is gonna be larger. I've heard that Mike's Gym is turning into another condo unit. Whenever you're in one of these town meetings, all you hear is about traffic. I know that it's difficult to get out of Nahann Street at seven o'clock in the morning, so I plan to leave work early. I'm just very, very concerned that there's so many large projects. And I kind of feel bad for the people working on the Wakefield district thing because I think that they're getting pushed back from traffic, which is really generated by all these projects that are outside of that state zone that they're working on. And so, I mean, it's the traffic's out of control. It's a narrow street. It doesn't have sidewalks in part of it. You've got school kids walking down on it. You're adding more and more. I just don't even know how you're gonna get out of the intersection in, in less than twenty-five minutes at seven o'clock in the morning, if you're lucky that the school bus isn't there. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Can I just get your last name, please?
Cummings, C U M M I N G S.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing, seeing none, back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mr. Harvey, two weeks, I assume, and we'll just see where we are at that time. Certainly some items that we could see where things stand in two weeks.
Now, the other option is if folks think that more work needs to be done, we can do a subcommittee. I'm willing to listen to, again, the pleasure of the board on this.
Mr. Chair, I'll leave it up to the the lawyer. If, if he wants to set up a subcommittee, I'm, I'm, I'll throw my hat in the ring. Unless he wants to wait another two weeks and see what we get and then go from there.
I guess Joe, my, my take would be, I mean, this is from someone who probably won't be on the subcommittee cuz of other circumstances, but I wouldn't leave it up to them. I mean, let's push. If they're not gonna give us time, we need to continue to move it forward.
Well, do they, do you guys think you have enough for the next two weeks without a subcommittee meeting or do you? Do you have enough information to go from what you've heard tonight?
So I'm, I'm feeling like if, again, if we're gonna go down that route, we're gonna want the benefit of that traffic study, the results, the recommendations. And if the consensus seems to be, it's got a, a project has, has some work to do to, to, you know, with more massing or architecture adjustments, then the subcommittee can start and work on that in detail, right, and come back to the main board. But I, if we had a subcommittee now, what, I'm not sure how much progress it would make without the full benefit of that other information. And input from the public safety departments, right, to, to guide this project, right? Where, where we think it might need to go, but without that information, I don't know what a subcommittee's task would be. You know, the charge would be, that's all. And how effective they would be until we get all that information. And it's clear we gotta go down that route potentially.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, Chip.
Could I circle back to Chris because I forgot to ask a question?
Oh, go ahead.
I, Chris, what's the open area ratio at this point? I, Chris, what's the um, open area ratio at this point?
So the open, uh, the open area requirement of the zoning bylaw is thirty percent.
Right.
Our open area ratio right now with the with the current changes is twenty-four percent.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
See, I have all these numbers ready for you, Chip, just in case.
Thank you, you knew it was coming.
New do, but the project doesn't have the traffic study. It seems to be a a theme and an actual strategy. This is the fourth time in a row. Where they can't find the traffic study until about six months in. Um, excuse me, that's exaggeration, but months in to the process, and it seems to me that's the starting point. Of where these should be looked at, not the endpoint, not the middle point, but the starting point. And at some point, there are developers that are coming in and doing this on purpose. This is just my personal feeling, but I'm gonna say it. Then there are the same engineers, the same architects and the same people in the room. They're letting that happen again and again and again. And maybe it's unintentional, I think it is. And um, I'm looking at scance at these projects as they come in now because this is. These are important projects. This is an important street, and I can't believe. As professionals, you didn't know that was question number one that was gonna come from this board. And to throw your hands up and go, oops. To, you should have started this process earlier. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, no, Mickey, that's why I've been concentrating on the hundred and eighty days, you know, not having a traffic study upfront. Because if we are gonna make density reductions, sometimes people want to see. What the traffic means, so to help guide that, so. It it is frustrating, um, and I'm laser focused on that. I'm laser focused on um, not letting the clock run. Uh, as a strategy for not having all the information we need to really have a full dialogue here, so. It is frustrating for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, it's the same architects and the same engineers and they know it. That's what I'm saying. That's a little above board. Um, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair. I recommend we continue for two weeks and kind of assess where we are at that time because by then hopefully they've had some conversations with T A C. Um, maybe have thought about some of the feedback they've gotten tonight. And had their own ideas about additional changes. And we see where we are, or if they, if they're still not ready, then we continue at that point. If they are and there's some new material, we 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 meet. But unless, Mr. Harvey, you want, Harvey, you want to. Adjust, but I'm recommending we continue for two weeks to keep the process moving.
I think that's fine. We'll certainly be in contact with the T A C, try to set a meeting up with them, and hopefully we'll have something for you in advance. Oh, Dave, I agree completely. Until we get that going, you know, we'll we'll put them on the schedule and we'll have to continue. It's not. And then at that point again. I'll be asking Mr. Harvard for continuance because I'm not gonna let this clock run out while. Uh, they didle around on the traffic study, so. With that, um, is there a motion to continue for two weeks?
I move that we continue this hearing to the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Second.
Okay, regular voting members and and Greg, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes, matters continued, uh. To the uh, twenty uh, eighth, uh, Mr. Harvard, you you did it this time. You know our practice is to have new material on the Friday before. Uh, so appreciate uh, that that will be done again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, we are on to other matters. Which is four hundred Autobahn Road, extra space storage change, sign it from store you self-storage to extra space self-storage. Is there someone here to address that? Yes.
Hello.
Hi, Hussein. Can you turn your camera on?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Please go ahead. If you have a presentation, that would be great. Do you, you should have the ability to share your screen?
Yeah, so we just have a sign package that I can present to you. Um, let me get to that. I'm also gonna show you the previously approved plans. Okay. Alrighty, um. I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay with you, guys.
Please do.
All right, perfect. So if you can see my screen, you will see the. Sign package that we're proposing for an extra space location. Um, at this address. So this sign is currently existing, but we're just going to be replacing the faces. For store you self-storage onto extra space storage, right? No structural changes on the sign at all, just a name change or a face change, right? Um, this here is another sign that's already there. Again, we're just going to be changing the faces and the sign to be extra space storage. Uh, no structural change at all. Here, currently. We are proposing a brand new sign. It is going to read extra space storage is gonna be in their traditional football design. And there's a little office sign right above that that office entry. Um, currently that that we're proposing to install. Um, those are the only two new signs that are going up. Other than that, everything is um, a face change. I also would like to. Share with you the previously approved plans. So this location already had a variance granted or a zoning board of adjustment granted. These were the signs that were previously installed here. As you can see, there was a store you self-storage large sign. There were two of these signs, the just the oval shaped ones. And um, they were placed as such on the building. There was one on this side. Um, there was one on the long side. Let me actually rotate, right, so you guys can see it better. Perfect. So as you can see, there's like. So we're, there was two signs, we're three signs total. We're going down to just one sign on the building. Um, and then obviously the refacing of the monument signs are already in there. Um, however, because this location previously had a variance granted. The township wanted us to present to you guys again just to make sure that everything is okay with the plans.
So are you, uh, are you eliminating the sign along one twenty-eight?
Um, sign along one twenty-eight, yeah. So I can give you a site plan map of ours. Um, how do I share that? Okay. Go back to this, right? Yes, okay, perfect. So this is the site plan right now. Um, are, there's two signs here. And then, yeah, is this main road, I'm assuming is one twenty-eight, the highway?
Yeah, there's a sign. I'm pointing at my screen like you can see me point. Yeah, on the opposite side of A two, C and B, there's. A sign. Are you eliminating the other signs that you're not proposing?
Correct, those signs have already been removed. So upon the transition from store you self-storage to extra space storage. We went out there and de-branded the location with the, you know, the brand that that's there now. And yes, there, those signs will go away. So again, the only sign will stay is this one, this one, and then one sign here. Which is sign B and C, which is C is just an office, a little sign, and sign B is shown right here on this side.
So you're taking one sign from the highway side and putting it on the opposite side of the building, is that? Along with another smaller sign, is that the extent of it?
Correct. I mean, we're not reusing, these are new signs because the new shape doesn't match.
I know, but there was a sign on one side of the building. You you're moving your new sign location to the other side of the building.
Uh, there was a sign there too. So if you see the, if you see the the old previous plans. You'll see that, um. Are you able to see them now?
We think they're actually eliminating two signs, if I.
Yes, I'm eliminating two, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not letting me show you the other one.
You had it at one point.
Yeah, can you guys see it now?
Nope.
Yes, we're seeing the store you.
Yeah, store you, so if you could see.
Okay, you, don't keep going.
So this.
That, that one will show it.
Yeah, so these two are going away. The top ones are going away. The the bottom one. Where it's shown with the eighteen wheeler right here. This store you sign is being replaced by an extra space sign. And then you see the two double doors where the pickup is located. That's where placing a little office sign to point people to go into the office for the rentals.
So, Mr. Chairman, in my view, given that they're reducing the total. Sign package, I'm fine with it.
Any other comments? Questions?
No, agreed. And I think the one on the top. The top picture on the right-hand side is the one on the highway.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
It just took me a second to orientate myself, so, okay. Anybody else questions, comments?
No, we just need a date. So who did this plan? Are you representative from the sign company?
Yeah, so we're representative design company. We, I mean, we want to get this going right away, so. Um, as soon as you guys approve it today, hopefully we can get our permits tomorrow. And then we'll put this in construction or fabrication. We're looking at it maybe a sixty-day turnaround at tops.
Okay, can you go to the new plan? Just, I don't think we got a copy of it, Mr. Chair, so.
Yeah, he, uh, Hussein, he's just got to reference the the, who put the plan, the the date on the plan. So if you can show a copy of that, um, with that information, he's need to reference that in the motion.
The new one.
The new one.
Copy of this, this page right here?
No, the new plan with extra.
The new plan.
Yeah.
Oh, this plan. The the extra space plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sure. We 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 have that submitted to the township.
Yeah, but we need, Hussein, we need to make a motion tonight.
Okay.
He needs to reference those plans and the date they were produced in the motion.
Okay.
So everything needs, so we know exactly what we're getting. That's it, right there. Just keep scrolling down just a little bit. Is there a date on there?
Yes, sir. If you look right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And scroll up so we can see who the uh, sign company is.
Easy sign.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I um, make a motion that we. Accept the new sign package presented by Easy Signs. Dated August sixteen, twenty twenty-three as an update to the board's previously approved. Sign package for this uh, property at four hundred Autobahn Road.
Second down.
Um, I would do a friendly. Motion that we keep and continue to have jurisdiction over signage.
Okay. I amend the motion to include that friendly amendment. Yes, and all other conditions of the original permit, of course, remain in full force. Um, really, yes, but we retain jurisdiction over any other future sign amendments at this property, yep.
Secondly amended motion.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, regular voting members and Mickey, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's approved. Uh, I don't know if I'm gonna have a letter for you tomorrow, Hussein, but I'll do what I can to have it done quickly.
No, it's it's all, it's it's good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, have a good evening, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
If you could stop sharing, please.
Come on, Tom, Tom, we're done early tonight. You have plenty of time.
Okay, next on the agenda is clerk board comments.
Nothing really except. Uh, by law review committee next week, uh, to talk about the. M B T A overlay, so I don't know if you're gonna be part of that, Greg.
No, it's uh, on planning board now. The subcommittee is. I don't know if we're quite disbanded, but it's been referred to the planning board now, so they're holding public hearings.
The sub, the committee's been beaten about the head and neck and they have.
And now it's time for the planning board to get insane.
Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I was at the, um. Gail asked me to come down, or, yeah, Gail asked me to come down, look at David Barrett's. Free family project to look for similarities to. Ours and it matched. It did all the right things, so I signed off on that.
The Hickory Hill, the Hickory Hill one or?
The Hickory Hill one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's that's in and in in the works, and then there was also a, uh. Another small one where we found a finding and that one matched as well, so I signed off on two projects this past week.
Good. Thank you so much for that. Anything else?
Did anyone notice that the um, the Lakeview project, the main entrance has been closed? So they, I don't know if they've been using the other entrance, or I've been driving by it a few times. It's closed up, meaning. I don't know how they're getting trucks in, if they're doing. If they're going in the other entrance.
I I was gonna go cut through there, like, whoa, what's that? And those uh, electrical things, electric charging. Car charging things at the end, so it's kind of, kind of odd looking at the end of that street.
Yeah, I'm sure they're bringing utilities in and doing whatever. I don't, I don't know, but. I I'm assuming they're using the other entrance, and I I don't know if the towns have heard, you know, any complaints about it, but. Uh, maybe it's just a quick turnaround, maybe maybe I just noticed it this week and it's just a couple of days, but I know, you know, like I said, I drive by it every day because that's the way I go home, so.
Yeah, I hadn't seen it, so.
I mean, it would be prudent to open the gates and and close the gates at night, like, when they're done for the day.
Depends on whether they're working in the roadway or not.
Yeah. All right, anything else? We do have a couple of minutes to approve from uh, January tenth and January twenty-fourth. Expertly uh, prepared by Gil. Any comments?
No, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of our January tenth, twenty twenty-four and January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four hearings. As expertly prepared by Gil Conroy, our secretary.
We can do a voice vote here. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
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 Motion to adjourn on this fine Valentine's evening.
Be Valentine's Day.
Day, everyone. Good job tonight, uh, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.